Good afternoon. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a budget workshop of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Tuesday, March 22, 2022, at 5:46 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AISD's central office to conduct this meeting. In addition, some staff and guests may be joining us by video, as well as some of our board members. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum Grande and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. And to our public, thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh, a second by Trustee Anderson to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance and the pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight, the administration will present a budget update. As we have previously done for budget workshops and similar workshops, tonight will include time for a full board discussion, a small group discussion, and an activity. Following the small group activity, the board will return to the dais, and each group will be asked to share out what was discussed and learned during the activity. If members of the public at tonight's meeting have any questions or comments, we ask that you please share those with Austin ISD staff who are in attendance at tonight's meetings, as the trustees will not be able to respond to individual questions during the public meeting. For those watching at home, the district will provide a live stream of the presentation and discussion at the dais, including the summary discussion at the end. Dr. Elizalde, could you please lead us through the presentation and activities for tonight?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, President Rodriguez, members of the board. I'm going to turn it over to our chief financial officer. And as he begins this part of the presentation, I will, I do want to make a few comments before we actually get into the activity whenever that portion begins, just to set up some expectations. Otherwise, that activity could, we could be here a very long time, as I'm quite sure budgets have a lot of different perspectives. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ramos.
President Rodriguez, Dr. Elizalde, members of the board. Tonight, we wanted to take the opportunity to really talk about and dive into our current year 2122 budget and also our forecasted 2223 budget, next year's budget, as well as four years beyond that. So in our board calendar, the month of March is when we historically have presented that to our board. And so I wanted to basically dive into not only the numbers, but some of the decision-making factors and some of the data that we've been looking at as far as looking at our priorities, and that has always been to deliver a balanced budget. So tonight's presentation, we're going to be talking about our current year budget and next year's budget. And so our priority has been to balance not only this year's budget, but next year's budget as well. And so we'll go over what that is looking like as far as our current numbers are concerned. Keeping in mind that these are projections, as we move forward, within the next few months, we will get better data, not only with our overall estimated property values for next year, but some of the expenditure reductions that we have been doing as a district. And so as we continue to look at our overall employees and staffing reductions, we are plugging those numbers into our system. And so these numbers will change, but the picture will continue to look better. So tonight will be a worst-case scenario, knowing that the numbers will look better as we continue through the next several months. One of the things that we always want to keep in mind when we look at our budgets and just the decisions that we make as part of that process is that we always look at the district's vision, and our vision always centers on our students. And as far as the district vision in Austin ISD, we really have high expectations for all of our children, and that is high outcomes for every student. So whenever we make our decisions, as far as what does our budget look like for next year, where are we going to prioritize our funds, our limited dollars? Are they really looking at what's best for our students? And so at the, at the end of the day, that is our focus as a district and as an administrative team and as a board. And so that is always one of the primary focuses that we look at when we are looking at these numbers. So one of the things that we wanted to look at is our current year budget. So when we originally adopted our 2122 school year budget, we adopted it with a budget deficit of $43 million. That assumed 3,000 student growth rate. It assumed about a 96% attendance rate. And so fast forward to October through two COVID variants, Delta and Omicron, that, those factors severely influenced our projections. And so when we look at final numbers, even as far as February, we now know that we were facing, instead of a $43 million shortfall, an 86.6, almost $87 million shortfall. And so we knew as a district, we had to take steps and make adjustments within our current year budget, because we did not want to end the year with a shortfall of $87 million. Also, as part of the planning process with ESER II and ESER III funds, we included funds in there to supplant or assist us with our budget deficit. And so for the 2122 school year, that included $58 million from both ESER II and ESER III. Also, the state of Texas did hold us harmless with our attendance back in the 2021 school year, but in essence, they required us to use our ESER II dollars, which was 26.6 million. So in essence, we were forced to use some of our federal dollars to cover our enrollment shortfalls from the 2021 school year. And so looking at that net effect for the current fiscal year, we were looking at a $28.6 million shortfall. And so again, wanting to make sure that we deliver a balanced budget this school year, it was a huge priority for the district. We started looking at steps to take. And so in looking at the overall revenue, we knew that our revenue was going to kind of be where it stood as far as overall state funding was concerned. But, but the biggest concern that we had was our recapture payment. And so originally, we had estimated a recapture payment of $709 million. That has now jumped to $761 million. And, and the two main factors that contributed to that escalation are our declining enrollment, which our enrollment did not come in as we had projected. We were actually 3,000 students below our projected enrollment, as well as our property values grew at a very rapid pace, and they continue to do so. And in our estimates, we are being conservative and estimating a high property value growth just to make sure that we anticipate the rapid and strong economy that we see in the Austin area. So at the end of the day, we are looking and estimating a $28.6 million deficit. So what steps are we taking this current school year to balance this current year's budget? And so one of the things that we wanted to do as a district is look at all vacant positions. And so as positions became vacant this school year, we really analyzed and determined whether those, were those positions a priority? Did we truly need those positions in the district? And so through that process, we began reducing the number of overall staffing units that we have to attrition. And so that has reduced our overall expenditures this current school year. We also implemented a hiring freeze, and again, going back to the vacancies, we looked as a leadership team at all positions that became vacant and, and really looked at hiring the true positions that we needed as a district. We also looked at district-wide teacher leveling. And so what that is, is we estimate it based on a certain number of students in this district. We know that we were 3,000 students below projections, so in essence, we were overstaffed at the teacher level. Also, we looked at where, where did those students end up attending school? So sometimes we project a certain number of students at one campus, a different number at another campus. And then, once everything settles down, the students may show up at a different campus, and another campus may be overstaffed as far as overall teachers are concerned. So one of the things that we made sure that we did is we moved teachers to the locations where our students actually were attending school. And that was to make sure that all of our students had an actual teacher in the classroom. We also looked at our cell phone and travel policy, and we eliminated many of those costs in the district. And then again, we looked at our ESER plan and supplanted our overall deficit with ESER dollars. And so in, in just looking at cost savings on the payroll side, through vacancies that have occurred in the district, through teacher leveling, reducing our overall number of teachers due to the student shortfall, we know that we have achieved a cost savings this current school year of $23.6 million. So you look at the 28.6 deficit that we are looking at, and that's a huge, we've made a huge dent in that overall deficit. So we're pretty confident that this current school year, we are going to end the year with a balanced budget as, that, which has always been our overall goal as a district.
And I want to just add that the reason that was important is when we got our ratings from the rating agencies, as you may recall, part of their expectation with their still keeping us at a AAA was that we would find a way to balance this, this current school year, 2122, even though we had brought forward to you a deficit budget, and that we would plan for a balanced budget for the 2223 school year. So I know, we know we're talking as, in terms of budget development with you all, the 2223 budget, but before we went forward, we wanted to let you all know what we're actually still working on for the 2122 school year, because we still obviously have some space where we can not have that deficit. And wherever we can, clearly, we need to do that. And so that's, I just want to overemphasize, because the team has worked really hard at doing that in a way that didn't impact people that were in positions for this current year, right? So we didn't, we didn't tell people this year, this position doesn't exist immediately. We've still done that through vacancies or not filling vacant positions.
And Dr. Elizalde is correct. We did receive basically, in essence, a warning from one of the rating agencies. So they, they maintained our AAA bond rating, but they also gave us a negative outlook. And so one of the things that they wanted to see is how management responds to the ultimate budget shortfall and our budget deficit. And so they are looking at what we do not only this school year, but next school year in order to make sure that we maintain and are fiscally responsible and financially strong enough to maintain that AAA rating, which again, there's only about six school districts in the entire state that have that high rating in, in the state of Texas.
Is this an okay time to ask a question about page four, the general funds budget, Mr. President? Shall we wait?
Well, it's the will of the board, but we can...
Whatever keeps us moving.
Well, let's have him finish the, the presentation, and then we'll ask questions.
Thanks.
We've got a few more slides, and then we pause. And so one of the areas that we're also continually looking at, making sure that we maintain our competitiveness, is with our teacher salaries. And so in Austin ISD, we have, we actually, our salaries are kind of structured in a different way compared to all other districts in central Texas, actually, most of the state. And so the historical and the customary way that districts pay their teachers, it's based on their experience. So whatever level a teacher is at, that is the, the pay that they receive. So in Austin ISD, one of the things that we do is we have base pay for all of our teachers. And then we have a program called PPFT, which is Professional Pathways for Teachers. And so that allows our teachers to earn points through an evaluation system, and that allows them to further earn an additional raise above our base pay. And so when you add PPFT into our overall teacher compensation payments, we actually are pretty competitive with, again, the, the central Texas region. One of the things, again, we're looking at next year, and is one of our priorities, is we are looking at a $1,000 increase for our teachers. And then we are looking at between a 1.5% plus PPFT, almost a 2% increase of midpoint for our teachers as well. And so in looking at, let's say, a 10-year teacher, the highest-paying district, again, is Flugerville, $55,500 at that experience level. With our PPFT program, our teachers earn between $53,800 to $67,395. So in essence, we are pretty competitive with the districts around us, which is important, because one of the things that we want to make sure is we, we maintain that competitiveness to make sure that we continue investing in our teachers and, and retain our valuable staff, including our teachers. And then when we're looking at our projections for next year, our 2223 budget projecting all the way to the 2526 budget year, we are looking at several assumptions. Our enrollment, we are assuming a flat enrollment, so we aren't projecting any growth in our enrollment for the next several years. And again, looking at being as conservative as we can with our budget estimate. So every enrollment, starting with the 2223 school year, is at $74,713. And so we assume a flat growth. Our average daily attendance is at 92%. Historically, we budget between 94% and 95%. At the end of the fiscal year, we usually achieve a 95% to 96% attendance rate. All that changed with the pandemic. And so one of the things that we've seen is we've been budgeting at a 94% rate, which we thought was conservative. And then at the end of the day, we're looking at a potential 92% attendance rate, just because of the Delta variant that hit really, hit us really hard in August, and then the Omicron variant that hit us pretty hard in January. And so there were weeks where our attendance was actually at 82%, 83% during that time period. So when you average that through the entire school year, we are projecting about a 92% attendance rate. And so again, being fiscally conservative with our projections, we wanted to assume that we would continue that 92% attendance rate, that it would take us a few years to get back to where we historically have been at 95%, 96%. Our property value growth, it's important to make sure that we estimate a high property value growth, because that gives us a good estimate of what we think we are going to end up paying in recapture. If, if we estimate a property value growth that's too low, let's say a 5% or 6%, then we're really going to be undervaluing what we think we're going to pay in, in recapture payment. And so the higher the property value growth, the closer that we are to our recapture payment estimate, which is, which continues to increase drastically this year, it's going to be 53% of our local tax collections. And so that amount is going to continue to increase, and you'll see in a later slide, eventually we'll reach an estimate at $1 billion in recapture payment. So it's huge for a district our size. Tax collections, again, looking at the same amount, 8% to 8.5% growth rate, kind of modeling and, and right in line with our property value growth. And then our tax collection rate, we estimate 98.5%. Historically, we come in at about 99%, so that gives us a little bit of cushion, depending on what may happen with the economy. We also know that because of the high property value growth that we have as a district, our overall total tax rate is going to continue to decline. And so when our property value grows faster than the state average rate, which currently is about 4%, then our property tax rate is lower than the average tax rate around the state. And so you'll see that in our projections. And then we are estimating appraisal and collection fees, which we must pay as a district, to our appraisal district and our, our tax collection agency at a 2% growth of budget.
On this page, I think it's really important, these are assumptions, I'm going to emphasize this, because different districts can, you can manipulate these to create what appears like, oh, we're really healthy financially, or not healthy, in either direction. And so I always think it's important for us to say what our assumptions actually are, not just, we're going to do them, but, and so take, for instance, attendance, daily attendance rate. If, if we don't, if we overestimate, then we're going to be budgeting in that we're going to get more money, and then we fall short, and then we come back and we're like, oh, no, now we actually have to dip into fund balance. So what you're hearing from our CFO is of course a best practice, which is, you're going to be conservative on everything, so that if you err, we need to err on the side of, hey, if we end up with additional funds and we can do something for staff with it for the following school year, that's great. What we don't want to do is say to ourselves, let's get real aggressive on enrollment. It's not that we don't believe we can go recoup more students, because I think if you think back just to conversation we had with, with Executive Director Delgado, we actually got a lot of students this year, new to the district, but we also had students that left. If we had kept the students from leaving, we actually would have come close to meeting that. So we have to continue to work that, but we don't want to take a chance on our funding formulas of saying, we're going to get to $77,000, and then that means we think we're going to generate more revenue, and then we don't have the revenue, and then we have to go make some adjustments. That is very hard for a system, and certainly for staff and students when we do that. So this sometimes gets undervalued, but I wanted to emphasize, because I think sometimes people are like, how come schools don't know what they're getting? Well, because we don't know what we're getting, we actually have to make so many assumptions that we bring to you when we ask you all to adopt a budget. I hope that makes a little bit of sense and why I just wanted to emphasize it.
The next section actually goes into our balanced budget activity that the school board will participate in. So before I give instructions on what that's going to look like, I'll open it up to questions through the slides that I presented thus far.
Thank you, Trustee Foster.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand two things. One, on the, the new hire teacher's salary, and you pointed out the PPFT, which is, allows our teachers to step up more with additional certifications and other activities that they engage. To the point of just keeping everything on the same playing field, so to speak, do we know that in the other central Texas districts, that they do not have comparable or other types of incentive programs, so that at the end of the day, we're not looking at apples to apples? In other words, is Leander only the base?
So, so all the other districts that we compare ourselves to, which are the big three around us, they do not have any type of program similar to PPFT. The only differences between the base pay and any additional pay that teachers would receive in those districts are stipends, which we have here as well.
Okay.
Let's say bilingual stipends.
So, so the extra things, quote unquote, that exist elsewhere are also extra things here?
That's correct.
So this ends up being a fair comparison?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the second thing, the, the general fund budget, the 6100 line and the 6200 line, where we had significant, we're at 52.8% in terms of our spending so far, leading to that projection of 712 for the payroll costs. But going down the line on the revenues, excuse me, on the expenditure side, with the exception of capital outlay, which is a relatively small line, the place where we are furthest along in terms of percent spent is contracted services. And so I just wanted to understand that a little bit more, how it looks like we're achieving savings in some areas, and that might not be one of them? So can you talk about that?
So the biggest difference as far as the overall percentages, the payroll costs are spread over 12 months.
Okay.
And so we have to, that's more or less an equal payment every month that we go into the year, so that's stretched out a little bit further than our contracted services. Most of those, we pay within a 10-month period. So those percentages are going to be a little bit higher. But as far as contracted services are concerned, you are correct, Trustee Foster, that's an area that we are looking at and trying to really evaluate our contracts and seeing if we, we, we do need some of the contracts that we currently pay for.
Okay, thank you.
And it's probably an example of systemic efficiencies that we're identifying. So for instance, Chief Ramos is being very modest, like, we have discovered that we had a lot of contracts, not all of them were being funneled through legal, not all of them were, all of a sudden, that bill would show up because one of our departments maybe had contracted services, and it's like this, because this is how we've always done it. So we're now bringing, he and Katrina are working together with legal, and so Edna Butts, actually, in our legal department, has a lot of experience with that and has taken the lead on ensuring that all contract, like, there should be certain things in there that are uniform, along with ensuring that that's actually part of the budget process, because in some instances, it hadn't been. And we really were discovering those kind of like, all of a sudden, someone's like, well, what about, it's like, wait, that wasn't in here. So it, it is an area to the point, I guess I just want to reinforce, your observations are our observations. So we're looking at both of those, streamlining them, reviewing them, and ensuring that we do know what services we're actually getting, and that we're not having redundancies in places where we could be using those services somewhere else.
Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Boswell?
I have a couple of follow-ups to Kevin's, and then a couple of others. With those contracted services, I think board policy, once we approve a contract, we don't reapprove when it's renewed, that we offer the renewal option. And I wonder if it might be worth looking at our policy, Policy Committee Chair, about whether we want just, I don't think we necessarily need to vote every time, but at least if the board wants a notification, if we're going to be exercising that option, just so we have a better handle on just kind of what's being renewed, so we have a better sense of that.
So I'll, I'll give an update, and then defer to, so three or four years ago, this question of transparency and accountability came up, and we changed our policy, or requested that the administration at that time share not just the renewal, but the cost of the renewal and the years, just as a simple transparency, accountability. And that has been helpful, because when the administration comes and says, please approve this contract for half a million dollars, and then the part that a lot of us, through our own accountability of reading it, it's like, for four years, well, that's 500,000 times four, but we wanted more clarity, so we asked, can you, can you list that out and show the ti, and show the total? I don't think we have requested through either policy or request to be notified every year of the renewals. I think the last time we did this discussion, like I said, three or four years ago, we're talking a lot, I mean, you're talking a big report about all these different renewals. So that's about as much as I recall.
Okay.
But I will defer to our chair in policy, if she wants to ask.
The, I guess probably a little bit more of explanation of what, as I'm recalling, because I don't have my notes in front of me from all of that, was it also had to do with reaching a certain dollar amount? And so we had talked about that there were some contracts that were smaller that wouldn't take us to that threshold. And there were also a lot of conversations at the time that there are reasons for just for, for allowing the contract to continue to roll and what that looks like. And so it was, we can certainly have this conversation again. I have no problem having it again and having it with a new administration's set of eyes of what that can look like for us moving forward. But there were a lot of minutia, a lot of, a lot of detail that just had to do with the individual contracts as they came through, and what the, for lack of a better term, full dollar amount that our board president just referred to was when we are approving contracts, and what that can look like in the item itself. So that as we're bringing it forward, we realize that we are voting on a contract for one, for, you know, for the year, costs this much, but in the length of the contract, it would actually equate to this much. And so there, there was a lot of conversation around that.
Yeah, and I do appreciate having that. And I think some, my question is, some of them are the option to renew, and so we don't have a sense of what is getting renewed and what isn't. And I, I would love, delimited by dollar amount, in the interest of awareness, just kind of knowing which ones we're choosing to renew would be helpful, not the $15,000, the ones that we're not even voting on. But within reason, that would be helpful. would love that conversation.
Yeah. And thank you for that distinction because I think for us, the conversation we had was these like four year contracts and they were, and they would be noted as like, again, one year, the amount times. So but I hear your, I hear what you're saying is that there's some where we authorize the superintendent and her team to have the option to renew, but we don't know when they renew or not. So
Those are the ones I'm interested in with the option.
Oh, trustee Singh, if you had.
No, stop it.
Okay. And then I have a couple of other questions. One is the PPFT and just, I'd like to make sure I understand. It's, it's a little like compounded interest, right? That if you, those highest numbers, you know, if you look at the 20 years and that 71,000 or the 10 years and the 67,000, those are people who've been able to maximize their PPFT from the beginning, correct?
Correct. And I'm going to let
Okay, thank you.
Chief Stevens.
And with a new program, that's like 20 years from now, someone would be able to get to that. But no one has had that much runway. Is that my understanding?
So no, right now, these are our current ranges in PPFT. This was taken from actual
What people are actually getting right now?
Right now, what they're actually getting. So if you have 20 years in the district, your salary is between 55,561 and 71,389.
Thank you.
Now, how they set PPFT up was a little bit different in that you've had some schools and teachers who've now been on it. This is year four, whereas la, this year is year one for the remaining schools.
Okay.
So not all teachers have had the same opportunity, but it is base building compensation. So if I earned $2,000 from PPFT points from last year to this year, that now becomes my, in my base salary and it's there every year. And then I continue to earn PPFT points for additional compensation as I accumulate those totals.
Okay, that's helpful. So I didn't know if it was the new program that could get to that. That helps me knowing that people actually are.
This is actual.
However, to your point, I did, when, when we were reviewing this, I talked to Chief Ramos, that what would also be helpful for me is what's the median or mean of, so that we do get a sense, are we moving teachers towards that? Because it is my understanding, this is now the year where all teachers have been now eligible up to this point. I guess it was phased in and, you know, we're certainly thankful to our employee organization for the design of this and allowing our teachers to be able to utilize, you know, through professional development and so on, the opportunities to earn these that do become a part of their salary, which means it's TRS eligible. So it actually goes towards their retirement, which is different sometimes in some stipends or supplemental pay that a teacher may get. You asked the question, trustee Foster, do other districts, and I think later on, I think even doing a comparison of what are our stipends for some of the same categories as other schools would also be helpful, even if we send that in a board update, you know, bilingual teacher stipends.
So we're currently working on the compensation manual. And this year, for the first time, it will include all stipends for all pieces. So you could see like what does a band director at a high school get versus the head football coach versus the coordinator on the campus who does SEL. And so all of those stipends will be laid out in that manual.
And so I think, I just want to make the last point is the designation or the difference between, and there's something called supplemental pay. So those of us that have been teachers, you know, if you stay after school and you work with these students, you get X dollars. You do get those dollars, but those don't get included as, they won't go towards my teacher retirement, towards my base. Whereas these that we're showing you here are part of their base. But I think getting some follow up on the mean or the median would be helpful so that we can see where, what's, what's the average of teachers that have five years in our district and so on.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I love the idea of being able to look at growth over time and how well the program's working. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. I have a question about ESR to the additional supplant that should be a quick question. Is that money that we're supplanting and we're just moving it into this year, the money we're using to pay ourselves back for COVID related expenses, the?
So so part of it is to pay us back for COVID related expenses. And then in essence, we are supplanting our budget, which we are including, replacing that with some of our payroll costs. So it does help our overall budget because we're replacing local dollars with federal dollars.
Okay. And how are we allowed to do that?
So as part of the ESR plan, districts are allowed to supplant their budgets, but you have to identify expenditures if you go in that direction. And so to us, the, the best way to maximize the supplanting and those ESR dollars is through our payroll costs and utility costs is two of the areas that we're looking at to make sure that we achieve that supplanting.
Okay, I'd love to talk offline about that a little bit more to understand that better. Thank you. And then I have a related question. It may not be something we're comfortable talking about here, about whether we think that ADA funding for during Omicron might change.
Regarding our attendance for this school year?
And whether there may be a statewide change in what's done.
There've been quite a few letters written and we haven't seen any movement or any conversation.
Okay.
So we're going to be conservative at this point because, you know, if we're wrong, then
Hooray.
Then yes, but at this point, I've certainly seen, I think, the same letters trustee Boswell, you've probably seen.
Yes.
And we have not seen or heard any conversations about any changes to acknowledging that the entire state had, school districts had attendance in the eighties and some even below that during that initial surge when students were meaning to stay home.
Okay, thank you. If that's helpful to know, I didn't know where that stood. And then one more question, Mr. Ramos, talking about recapture and just the relationship to the basic allotment and, and making sure people know that if, if we are able to get recapture, that doesn't necessarily all come back to us as money we can spend, that it's really important to address recapture. And I really appreciate all the work that's being done to educate people about it. And then until the state increases the per student funding, we still have real limits on what we can do.
The truest way for our recapture payment to be reduced is if the state increases that per student allotment. That would be a huge undertaking at the legislative level. And so that's why one of the things that, some of the ideas that we're looking at are small wins for the district, like looking at a discount for paying our recapture payment on time, maybe a credit for what we pay into social security. And so we're looking at some of those ideas and hoping to approach the legislature during the next legislative session to achieve some small wins and help us with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And for the very few people who are watching this workshop, we are going to be working on setting legislative priorities soon and welcome ideas about that. You know, the ones that you've brought forward and from people who have an interest in us. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ashi.
I just have two quick questions, Mr. Ramos. Thank you so much for being here. I think finance is one of the more complicated things. And I'm grateful that there are people like you in the world who have the expertise in it because I most certainly do not. Being a preschool teacher, I tend to focus on numbers zero to 10. And so get much higher than that and sometimes it can get a little complicated. My questions were, I, we had discussed that you said that we had seen an increase in our recapture payment because of the decrease in our enrollment, which I have had several people asking me that because it seems counterintuitive. It seems like if we were having a decrease in enrollment, then that would mean a decrease in our recapture payment. So I was wondering if you might be able to provide a layman's terms answer that people could understand how that comes to be?
So the easiest way to explain recapture is every school district has, let's say, a glass of water and all these glasses are the same. And so the state says, Austin ISD, once you fill up that glass, that's what you are entitled to receive in funding. If you collect more in local taxes, then the glass overfills. And so anytime that glass overfills, that's what we send back in, in recapture payments. What causes our glass to overflow in a much quicker pace is when we have less students because then the state considers us wealthier than other districts. And so when you look at our total property value and divide it by the total number of students, that's going to look at your wealth level. And so when we have less students than what we anticipated, then the state of Texas sees us as wealthier than otherwise would have happened. And so in essence, our recapture payment increases and the state says you owe us more money.
Let me see if I can say it also in a different way. The state is saying, you are telling us you're going to have X number of students and that's going to cost you this much money. Well, if you don't have four children, you only have two, well, then you don't need as much money because you only have two kids, not four. So if the money you collected, so we gave you the money for four kids, you only have two. So we're going to take away your money because you don't have four kids. So the fewer kids you have, the more money they're going to take away from us because they're saying you have less children to educate. And so on, on paper, that makes total sense. It's even like the attendance, which is a very outdated, in my personal opinion, way of funding, because we don't tell a teacher, oh, today your attendance, you're supposed to have 22 kids and today you only have 20, so I'm only going to pay you for 20 kids. The teacher still has to prepare for all the students he or she has and is still held accountable for all students, regardless of how many, but we are funded based on how many kids show up on a regular basis. But none of our expenses change whether we're at 92% attendance or whether we're at 98% attendance. And so again, on paper, it may make a lot of sense. Yet in the real world, it's like, well, yeah, but we hired teachers based on four children. And yet the state is saying, yeah, but you didn't get them. They didn't show up. So we're going to take more money away from you. Does that help?
It does. I think that that, between the two examples, I do feel like I can, I can answer that question in a way that's a little bit more relatable for people to understand because as you both well know, the algorithm by which your recapture is determined is extremely complicated. And so unless you are living in it every day, it's really hard for the average person to understand how, how that payment is created and determined. So I appreciate that answer. That does help me answer that. I have been asked that. And then the second question that I had kind of goes back to the projection and what we, you were saying, the, what we were going to do for this upcoming year budget in being conservative. And one of, thank you for pulling that up. One of the main ones that we talked about was our projection of enrollment. And as somebody who's been on the board for a few years and, and was one of those people that, that was involved even before I was a trustee, we've had several years of, of not flat enrollment, but rather projections of decreases in enrollment. And so I was just curious as to the decision to say flat as opposed to decreasing, given that all of the projections that I have seen in the years I've been following have shown decreases.
So, so even though this current school year, we were 3,000 students short, overall, comparing last year to current year, we didn't lose 3,000 students. We lost a little over 200 students. So we have drastically reduced the number of students that we are losing in this district. And so when you look at historically, some of the losses that we've achieved, they have been much greater than where we currently are at now. And so we now have a department that specifically is geared towards making sure that we maximize the students and keep our parents here in this district. So we feel that with a 200 student reduction during a pandemic, it's pretty conservative to say, if we budget at a 0% growth, we think that's achievable as a district. We're hoping we come in above that. But we think that's a realistic projection.
Excellent. And I will say publicly again, thank you so much for creating that position, for focusing on enrollment and doing something that I know, not only this board, but previous boards have asked for for years. So say that again publicly. And then the last question, and I say this more from kind of again, the average parent or the average taxpayer's position, there's a lot of information, a lot of use of the term inflation occurring right now in, in the nightly newscast. So what, do you foresee how that would impact any of our budgeting now as, as it pertains to inflation and the impact on the average taxpayer?
So we are building, when we project our overall budget, especially on the operational side, we look at the cost of doing business. So that's electricity, that's what it's going to cost for supplies and things of that nature. So that's built into our projections as is. I think the higher inflationary factor that we have to look at is our compensation. And so for us as a district, in order for us to make sure we're able to afford compensation increases, we have to cut somewhere else. And that's kind of where you're seeing some of the recommendations to cut staffing and other areas so that we can ensure that we're able to maintain a competitive edge in the central Texas area.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ashi. Trustees, any other, trustee Singh?
Thank you so much, Mr. Ramos. I can see a lot of blood, sweat and tears went into creating this. It's very informative. I would, could you mind putting up slide 11? Because to me, this is the one that's a bit jarring. That's the fund balance trend. Yeah. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So that red line is basically what we really should be, what we should have in our fund balance
That's our local
Or our savings to have 20%.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And so when I, so we're okay up until we get to 2024. So does this graph reflect the budget assumptions that are on the other slides here?
It does. So it projects a flat enrollment. It projects a 92% attendance. And so again, these estimates are worst case scenarios. And so as we move further on along the months, we'll have better data. But one of the things that we want to make sure is we don't paint a pretty picture of what our budget's going to look like when historically, especially this, the past two years, we've seen some huge impacts to our budget that have caused us to be above what we had projected. And so we want to make sure that we're conservative in our estimates. Every year that we go into our next year's projections, we'll have better data. Also assuming that once we get into next year's budget, we're still going to be looking at vacancies. And so if a vacancy occurs, we're going to be looking at that staffing unit and seeing if it's a priority and we want to hire for that staffing unit. So there is a possibility that we will continue to reduce expenditures to nutrition and make those estimates look better than what they currently are.
Do you feel like it would be enough to actually, like, I mean, that's pretty dramatic and I'm glad we're being conservative. I think that's really smart. So I do appreciate that. I'm just like, do we have ideas of more, either more dramatic cuts that we would be willing to consider over the next five years or more dramatic sources of revenue? You know, I'm, I know that right now, we're just talking year to year, but is there a mechanism in place for us to be looking a few years out as well?
So one of the things that we have to continually monitor is data. And so the biggest piece, the biggest data point that's going to impact our budget is our overall student attendance and our property value growth. And so those are two factors that we're going to continually monitor. And so let's say we start next school year and we're actually 300 students above what we projected. And then our attendance is now 94%. So that helps our overall projections. And then we can start kind of improving our projections in the following years based on the data that we have next year. And so it's, it's a continual monitoring process as far as looking at data. But right now, we have to be as conservative as we can be in looking at where, where historically we've been with our overall numbers.
And let me just add, I think, to your question about other significant cuts. So you've kind of gotten a little ahead of us because this is actually some slides we haven't yet gotten to because we wanted to do an activity where we actually talk about it actually, like what you're saying is that's why we were going to do the activity where we look at some of the cuts that are probably like the largest dollar amounts, that, that kind of a conversation that we want to hear from you all. And then we were going to have a small group conversation then about what does that mean as to the very questions that you're asking us. Maybe that, maybe that helps a little bit.
I appreciate that.
And for the benefit of the public, because they, this is posted, we, we're
We, we're up to slide eight. And Trustees Singh noted slide 11, so I just want to make sure folks are tracking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. I know, I'm just anxiety ridden, that's all. But the other question, and I want to go back to that PPFT chart one more time. So I just want to confirm. So we actually do have 20-year employees in our district who are making $71,000 today.
That's correct.
I would love to meet some of them. Like, I would like to hear from them, like seriously, like what is their experience? You know, people who are at these upper ends. Because PPFT is one of the best things that I feel like we could be doing in a district. And I really appreciate that. But I really want to hear from people who have taken full advantage of it and see like, you know.
You, you look at that number, that's a huge retention piece, especially for our experienced teachers. And so it, it's nice to see a number that high.
Yeah, yeah, and I would be curious to see the median as well. So thanks for bringing that up. You said we're only on slide eight, right? I want to make sure that I have my, my other questions. I'm going to assume that at some, are we going to be able to see tonight like a proposed budget for next year with like changes?
So that is in the April Board meeting. We, we just concentrated on the 22, 23 years budget.
Okay.
And so that's going to be pretty detailed.
Okay, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustees. Other questions, I think?
I have questions.
Trustees Apata.
Yes. Okay, let me see.
And just to, just to clarify, we're asking questions about slide one through eight for now. And then we'll, we'll get to the other slides after.
Okay. So you're talking about stipends, stipends for extra things, right? Like bilingual teachers, bilingual librarians. What about TAs who are bilingual? Do they get a stipend?
So currently, we do not offer bilingual stipends for teaching assistants. The only bilingual stipend we offer as a district is if you're certified in bilingual as a teacher. And so those are the current stipends that we have for bilingual.
Oh, okay, so it's just certification. Okay. Does TEA have a teacher pay schedule that we're supposed to follow or?
So TA has a minimum teacher pay schedule. It's much, much lower than what ours currently is. And so it, I would estimate it's probably $10,000 per experience level below what, where we currently pay.
Wow. Okay. Because you compared the, that we are equal to other school districts that pay $55,000. Is that the starting, that's not the starting pay, is it?
No. So the, the highest starting pay currently in central Texas among the big districts is Flugerville. They're at $51,900. Our base pay starts at $51,150, so less than $1,000 below where Flugerville is at. This year, next year, we may catch up to them.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. I, I don't, is, are you going to talk later about Title I? Because I can wait on that one.
So Title I, we're going to focus on that in the April budget meeting for next year's budget. So we'll have some numbers then.
Okay, all right. And then that's a question on how do we determine how much a campus will get? How do you allocate? Is it by the number of students?
So much of it, as far as the staffing, is determined by the number of students. And then we also have a per-student allocation. We also look at economically disadvantaged numbers for campuses and include a bump in both staffing and on a per-student, non-staffing budgets. One of the new pieces that we've added this year is we also include an extracurricular, co-curricular allotment for campuses to use for activities outside of the classroom to make sure that they have the capability to really involve students in, in programs and, and activities outside of the regular school day to, to try to really get students involved at the campus level.
Okay. And then the, I, I think the last question was, when you said we're going to monitor the attendance and data, those are the most important, right? But we, we also, like, the new laws that passed that we could get additional funds. If we get students that go on to college or join the military or get certifications, there, is that, if, if we accrue some of those funds, is that something we have to pay back?
So that, like, let's take, for example, CCMR funding. If we, we earn that funding, then that is ours to use as needed as a district. So, so that's money that we do not return. The only time we return any funds back to the state is when they overpay us based on what they think our overall student numbers and attendance look like, and if we end the year lower than those projections.
Okay, all right. I, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Apata. Trustees, any other questions? I just had, I don't know if it's a question or just a comment. On, on slide seven of the Revenue Budget Assumptions, I just want to make sure the public understands that as part of the budget assumptions, these, these are not maybe all of them. Because I think I've, I've heard you say in other conversations, the inflation rate is part of it. The recapture payments are a part of it as you plan out, kind of, as you even mentioned yourself, that at some point in the near future, between 2023 and 2026, will be at, at a billion. And then the other one that, that you, that's part of the Revenue Budget Assumptions, I would imagine would be turnover rate or retention rate. Is that has become a fill rate?
We call it fill rate.
You call it fill rate. So that's also part of it. I just want to make sure the public understands that these are all assumptions that are, that are made into the budget, which are really relevant, especially around our rising prices for not just our, our goods and services, but our housing and transportation and other issues as that becomes even more important to our community. Dr. Assun. Trustees, any other questions before we go to the next part? So we are ready for the balanced budget activity.
So as Chief Ramos is going to take us through this activity, I do want to kind of set the stage for this activity because I want us to be able to have an objective of what it is we're trying to accomplish. And at the same time, I also want to be very clear about what we're not trying to accomplish so that we stay within what our intent of this activity is. So what this is, is for you all to have an opportunity to look at the same things that we're looking at that are aligned to the question that Trustees Singh asked about, like, well, have we thought about other cuts? And so we wanted you to be able to have a lens into our world of what specifically we are looking at and where these things come from. We're interested in listening to the dialogue and the feedback that we get. I do want to be really clear that what we're not doing here this evening is taking a vote on which one of these you all think we should do. That is not the intent of this activity. And I want our public that may be watching us now or, or at a later time be clear that, that, that the board adopts the budget in whole or doesn't adopt the budget. But your feedback is really important to us. So we wanted to conduct an activity where we can do that. But I also want to make sure that we manage expectations and that we don't begin a conversation about, I want to vote for this or I want to vote for that. And that way, our constituents, your constituents, will know what this activity is really intended to do. And that's to, we really want to listen in to, what does the conversation sound like as we talk about our mission, vision, and values? And I think you'll see, I mean, our, our goal is that you will come to some of the same conclusions we have as we look at what is available. But if we're totally off the mark, we definitely want to hear what that conversation is. So I'll turn that over now to Chief Ramos.
And so as Dr. Elizalde said, the, the goal of this exercise is really to give the board an opportunity to go through the, the budget planning process. And so at the end of the day, as an administrative team, we're tasked with delivering a balanced budget to the school board. And so in June, you will be voting on a proposed budget that we recommend to you, which includes expenditure reductions. It, it will include compensation increases. It'll, it'll look at staffing reductions. And so all those factors are what we will propose at the end of June to the school board to take a vote. But the, the overall goal is to look at some of the decision-making that's involved, what areas we look at as a district. So some of the recommendations that you'll see tonight, those come from suggestions that we have come up as a district. Though there are some suggestions from the 2018 task force that are in there as well. And then there are some expenditure reductions that other districts have taken that have experienced budget shortfalls and, and budget constraints. And so it gives you a good opportunity to look at the decision-making process and what it takes to balance a budget. And so as you go to your tables, you will start off with an $87 million shortfall. You will see some different colored cards that are laying on the table. The green cards basically reduce your shortfall. Those are revenues, that increase revenues as a district. The red cards add to your deficit. Those are additional expenditures. And then the yellow cards also reduce your overall deficit. Those are expenditure reductions. So green and yellow will reduce that $87 million shortfall. Red will add to your $87 million shortfall.
And so as you do this activity, and, and I'll make copies of these and bring it to each table, each working group. But I thought, you know, the teacher and me has to come out, that maybe I'd give you some question stems that at the end, you might summarize your activity. And so there'll be things like, what I found the most challenging was, or what surprised me was because I think that X, Y, and Z, for example, first, then next, and the last one, in my opinion, blank, blank, blank. In addition, blank, blank, blank. So I'll make copies, and this just, you might come up with something different. But it was just to kind of help you to summarize after you go through the activity, which of these stems might be starters for you to kind of give us a sentence or two of your experience.
How are we engaging Trustees Apata on the activity? Or is there a way to do that?
I don't think we have the, I think with the Zoom part of this activity, we're struggling. She could certainly look over the items and do that on her own and then could provide us feedback.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. We move to the tables?
Tables.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Board of Trustees, first of all, I just want to say thank you for participating in tonight's activities. Before we open up for comments, I'd like to ask for each of the groups to provide a summary of their discussion and share the major points of the plan. I just want to remind you, there's no competition between the groups. Vice President Wagner, could you share for your group? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize you were.
I was eating a piece of fruit when I got called on. So apologies for the delay there. So for our group, we went through the exercise. It was quite enlightening, I think, just to think through all the different possibilities and think through the, kind of the push-pull of each one. On most of them, though, we were pretty well unified, I think. It was, there were really only about three or four that we kind of had some, some deeper discussion about. But most of them, we were pretty quickly there on. And we ended up with a net gain of $19.7 million was our, our final tally.
Thank you. I was part of the group with Trustees Ashi Boswell and Singh. And I think, do, did we decide who was going to report out? Me? I don't remember the total. More than there. Oh, yeah, sorry. Not that it was a competition, but ours was a little bit more than, I think it was 19.625, if I'm not mistaken. Trustees, any other comments? Because I want to make sure we get, y'all get to share some insights of how easy or how difficult it was. Oh, so Trustee Anderson and Trustee Poser.
So for me, it was, it was challenging. But I really appreciated this exercise because it really, it really opened my eyes to the discussions that are had before things get to us. So, I mean, I, I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
And I mean, I think I, to be sort of a public facing on this, the exercise had us acknowledge what an $87 million projected shortfall and required that we basically do the work that will have to be done to balance the budget. So the consideration of all the different difficult decisions you would have to make, reducing high school offerings where there's low class sizes. There's reasons to do that. And then there are reasons that that would cause, could cause challenges. Eliminating non-UIL activities and the associated transportation. There are arguments for, there are arguments against. And I won't even get into, well, to skip all the way to the most, you know, there, there are things that we can do with the budget that would be fiscally prudent, would produce equity, and that would absolutely result in segments of our community really rising up. And the one thing we had the luxury of was not considering the difficult choices that are fiscally responsible, good choices, will be at the end of the day, difficult. And if we engage a collaborative exercise where the administrator, administration operating on the vision imparted by the board produces a balanced budget, and that balanced budget includes things that are going to make some of us unhappy, that there might be things in there that I don't really feel so good about, but I understand the absolute necessity of balancing our budget, then I'm going to have to make a choice. And what I'll say ahead of this process or this point in the process, if we produce a balanced budget responsibly, equitably, and it includes pain, then I, at the end of the day, will stand for it and I will defend it. If we produce a budget where I've got big question marks around the equity, big question marks around us not taking brave steps where we need to take brave steps, and of course, I would stand critically as a critical partner and say, I'm not, I'm not with this yet. So we have a long way to go. And this was like a fun exercise in a way. But this is a fun exercise ahead of a hard journey.
Trustees, Trustee Singh and the Trustee Boswell.
One thing that I really appreciated was I could tell from the choices, do you have our cards? I, I could tell from the choices that we had on our little cards here. I feel like I've got to like demo it. Reflected a lot, a lot of the things that we as trustees had talked about. And so I appreciated feeling like we were listened to. So thank you all for that. I also, I don't know if your group did this, but our group, at the end, we actually kind of brainstormed other ideas that maybe weren't on the cards. And so I would love an opportunity at some point to share those with the senior administration. But I think for us, when we felt like, there are certain things that were like no brainers. I kind of feel like we were pretty in sync. Like if it, if it had to do with, like, the pre-K teaching assistance. Of course, with Trustee Ashi in our group, there was no way that was going anywhere. But, but like, we just know, like, that has an immediate impact on student achievement. And it has a long-term, 12-year impact on student achievement. And so like, that was a no-brainer. And then there are other things where we're kind of like, you know, that doesn't have a huge impact on student achievement. a huge impact on student achievement, it doesn't do a lot for our community, or creating, you know, school communities, or it doesn't do a whole lot for our employees, so, yeah, that's maybe one we'd be happy to, you know, ditch. So I, I thought it was really fun. I want more of that.
I'm sorry, president Rodriguez, just to be collegial, I do want to acknowledge the efforts of the group that was almost as good as ours.
Now Kristen has to sit next to you. So, yeah, I really appreciated the chance to sit down with my colleagues here and really have, start having these conversations. That's not an opportunity we've had yet to really talk with each other, and, you know, I really, we are, I think, aligned and really grounded in the values we've adopted, in the scorecard we've adopted, in the priority focus areas we've adopted, and that gave us a very good starting point, a foundation for having the conversations about, about what and why, and I think led to a lot of unity on, on what we were willing to sacrifice, what was not negotiable at this point, and, and what more, you know, we might consider. And I think we did write down a lot of other ideas, and I think there's a lot of room. We have a really smart community who cares a lot about our schools, and I think there's room for bringing in, as this process moves forward, more ideas, more things to consider, and, and, you know, that we can get to the very best solution in what is a difficult circumstance together. So I appreciate the chance to really start that conversation together, and obviously an immense amount of work had gone into this, and, and it's a whole lot easier to get here when you're presented with a menu that you guys have spent months and months and months creating. And I know there were things that you hadn't considered bringing to us, and things that you had, you know, suggested publicly, so I really appreciate all the work behind it that let us start having these conversations.
Thank you. Trustees, any other comments? Trustee Ashley.
The teacher in me is really wanting to use your prompts. I can't help myself, Dr. Roswellde. I, I think that, I appreciated very much, Mr. Ramos, first of all, he kind of stood with us, we had a lot of questions, and he was very patient, and I really was, I was surprised at the openness with which you, you were willing to, to provide the amount of detail that, and on the, in the moment. I would have needed notes, and you were able just to bring that right up, and I'm so appreciative of that. I'm also extremely appreciative of your allowing us to write on the cards as we were jotting down things, and even on the ones that we ultimately turned over and said, these aren't things, but please go back and, and look at what we wrote down, and I was so appreciative of just, of what was obviously an immense amount of thought, an immense amount of work. I am, I'm going to use a different adjective, because I'm, or I'm actually going to add a word, I am not surprised by how much we agreed. I'm not surprised, because there has been a lot of conversation by those that sit on the dais and with me, that we have been having these conversations for a long time, and so I'm not surprised that both groups were very similar to what ended up being the end-dollar amount that we came to. And to me, that is indicative of the presentations that we have had, it's indicative of the information that we have been given, and it's indicative of our focus on our mission and values and keeping students at the forefront. So thank you for that.
Trustees, other comments? I think mine are pretty brief. First of all, thank you, Dr. Roswellde, thank you, and the entire team for sitting there with us and walking through this. I think the one thing that I was pleasantly surprised by was that we all kind of went through this discernment process, that if the public would read our mission, vision, and values, our strategic framework, and if the public would read our district's scorecard, and then go through this kind of exercise, they will see that we've been discerning all of these things aligned to our mission and values, and you could really see that. I think the other part is that what didn't, what didn't surprise me is the, the long list of other suggestions about these things, and the flexibility of our colleagues and administration, and their willingness to allow us to write on the cards and ask, here's some more questions, here's some guardrails, here's some things that we think you need to consider. So in my opinion, it was a, a good use of time, and I think probably gets us a little bit further down to the final decisions that, that we need to make in the best interest of our children, our parents, and our staff and teachers. Thank you. Trustee Zapata, I apologize, you're on the, on the video, I wanted to make sure you got an opportunity to, to share your thoughts.
Just from hearing from you all, there was, it was impossible to try to figure out what you all were looking at, but just hearing your comments, I think this is something that is even useful. It reminded me when we did this with the city budget, where they came to the community and they did activities like this, so that we all understood where, who we were thinking about cutting, and just having that conversation as community, where to make those investments. So I think this is what you all experienced, is something that would also help the community to understand and to be able to participate in an activity like that, because it's, it's a learning process, you know? Here we are, very strong advocates, and having this experience really helped us understand, so I think that would also, could result in the same way for the community to understand when we have to make those tough choices. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zapata. I'd also guess that our group, and I'm pretty sure that the other group as well, had you in mind when we did not propose, we, we supported the idea of having a minimum wage of $16 an hour for our employees. There was no question, I think from either group, that that would be a part of the budget as, as we were going through it. It was one of the things that we could consider not doing, but I think everyone was in agreement that we should do that. So thank you for your words of encouragement around that particular issue. I know trustee Lugo is on, but I think she's on Facebook, so I don't think there's a way for her to, to participate. She's on Zoom. Oh, trustee Lugo, any thoughts? Welcome.
Thank you, president Rodriguez. At this time, no additional comments or questions. Thank you.
So, let's see. So we're going to continue, right? So, so Dr. Roswellde, could you and your staff lead us through the remainder of the budget discussion, starting on slide nine?
So thank you for your very robust participation, which was also not surprising from our board, and I appreciate that, and I do want to thank our team for all of the work that went into making this possible, and we promise, we do know how to spell magnet, and we'll, we'll make that correction. So, with that, it is, I think it's important for us to also remember, I want to manage our expectations, we've gathered a lot of feedback, we'll continue to do so, and then we also have to remember, there is a point where we have to move into decision-making, and, and then learn from that process, and then continue to improve, and that is partly why we started when we did, so we could begin some of those conversations. So at this point, knowing what we know, we want to present what our thoughts have been regarding what some of the priorities we're looking at, and see how aligned we are with the thinking that you all as our trustees had. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Ramos.
And I'll start by saying that I'm really glad that the board had the opportunity to kind of go through this exercise and really have a good inside picture of what we go through as an administrative team. I think, I think it helps bring us closer together when we, as my team around me, are having these discussions, and I kind of smiled when I heard the board having similar discussions, and it's a, it's a back-and-forth debate, and so you have these recommendations, and we have debates at the table, and they're sometimes pretty fierce, but at the end of the day, we come to a consensus. And so when, knowing that, when we propose a final budget to the board in June, it is because we have come to consensus, we have made some tough decisions, but we feel it's the best decisions that we can make for the district and bring forward to the board. So glad y'all had an opportunity to participate in this exercise. So that being said, what are we looking at in our recommendations for the 2023 budget year, next year's budget year? We are, again, looking at evaluating and eliminating an estimated 250 administrative and operational positions, that's at a cost savings of $13 million. We're looking at non-payroll, non-staffing budget reductions, 5% at the campus level, that's $400,000 in savings, 10% in central administration and operations, $11 million in savings. Looking at ESER III supplanting for the 2023 budget year, the plan did include $31 million for next year in supplanting and assisting our budget deficit, as well as $8.6 million in the 2324 school year. So over the next two years, we do have some ESER funds to assist with our overall budget shortfall. And then, of course, we have to look at compensation, looking at the cost of living in Austin, the inflation that is just skyrocketing in our area, and so, oh, okay, I got you. And so we are looking at increasing our minimum hourly rate to $16 an hour for classified employees. That affects the NIS, IS, and auxiliary pay scales at a cost of, an increased cost of $8 million. We're looking at our teacher base pay, $1,000, at a cost of $5.5 million. Then looking at teacher salaries, 1.5% plus PPFT, so averages to about 2% of midpoint, at a cost of $6.3 million. And then, of course, looking at our bus driver pay, bringing their minimum hourly rate to $21 an hour, at a cost of an estimated $1 million. So those are some of the priorities that we have brought forth and had discussions on with, with the board. And so what do our projections look like for the next several years? And so when you look at the overall forecast, when you look at the adjusted net change, that is what we are looking at. So for the 2023 budget year, next year, with the adjustments that we are making, with the increases in compensation, we are looking at a $3 million surplus. So the board got to $19 million, we got to $3 million, so there's, we are continuing to look at areas, but again, that is our current projections. And as I stated, as we go further on into the month of June, these numbers will change a little bit as we make decisions throughout the process. Looking at the 2324 school year and further out, you see that, again, we, we look at a shortfall of $60 million, 61.9, and then 49.5, and again, that's because we are trying to make sure that we estimate conservatively, looking at a 92% attendance rate, looking at flat growth at enrollment, and then looking at an estimated 8.5% property value growth. So with those things being said, we are continuing to look at a deficit, we will make adjustments the following school year based on what our numbers look like, and that's one of the, the things to remember about a budget, it's a planning tool. So you make assumptions, you make planning, you make decisions, but you're also constantly looking at the data and making adjustments as needed. So it's a continual process that we continually monitor throughout the year. We give you monthly financial reports, not only on what we're spending, but also on the data that we're monitoring, making sure that our assumptions are right on target, and if they're not, then we make the needed adjustments the following school year.
And not every school district will forecast out. Some CFOs don't like to do that for this very reason, because you do have to use the same assumptions that you start with as your worst-case scenario. Our goal, of course, would be that past the pandemic, we wouldn't have to be at a 92% attendance rate, as an example, and we'd have information throughout next school year that would inform that and would be constantly changing. So it is, to use Chief Ramos's words, it's a worst-case scenario, and it doesn't mean we immediately have to take action right now, it does mean we have to be monitoring, and that's why you'll hear him continue to say, we have to keep looking at the data, and that's what he and his team do, and so I don't want anyone to go into a panic mode, but just want everyone, and that is why you'll have, some CFOs will be like, uh-uh, we're not forecasting, we're just going to build the budget for next year, and then we'll start building it for the following year. And there are obviously pros and cons, but given where we are, we thought it was important to continue to do a forecast, much like you do with any other planning, because it's always better to be able to make adjustments, rather than starting in the middle of next year saying, we're starting all over again. So that we benefit from everything that we've learned from you all and from our community up to this point, and moving towards the final adoption, all that feedback that we get, we use that then to inform as we move forward.
And looking at our fund balance trend, you see that next year, 2023, we are looking at a board policy required fund balance of 23.6%, so that is above our 20% requirement. Then the future years, our fund balance again begins to decrease. One of the things that we want to make sure that we really stress and highlight is during the, the next legislative session, we really talk to our legislatures, legislators, and really address the recapture issues that we are facing as a district. We are the highest-paying recapture district in the state, and so I think it's, it's really important that, that we get the word out and, and be really transparent about our situation, and, and try to obtain some small wins with the legislature to make sure that we try to reduce our overall burden with our recapture payment. So that is one of the areas that we will be focused on over the next year, our board will help with that. We have community members that are anxious to start discussing this with legislators, and so we are doing our best, thanks to our communications department, they're getting the word out about our recapture payment and how that's affecting our district. So, so we are starting to have that process communicated to our community, because most of our community doesn't understand what recapture is, how it affects us, they, they pay their taxes, and they assume that we keep the entire local tax collections, which we know as a district, 53% of that goes back to the state. And so that is a continual communication process that we will be working towards with our community. And then looking at our overall, again, recapture payment, next year, we are estimating a recapture payment of $798 million. And then when you look at the 2526 school year, we are estimating a recapture payment of $1 billion. So that, the recapture issue that we face as a district is not going to go away, and as our property values continue to escalate, and you continually hear about new high-rises going up in downtown, which is going to increase our property values, that's also going to increase our recapture payment as a district. So we have to continually monitor that, keep an eye on that, and hopefully, the legislature can assist us with what, the challenges that we face as a district. And then based on the current funding formulas with House Bill III, as our property values continue to grow at a more rapid pace than the statewide average, what that does with the current funding formulas is that causes our tax rate to be reduced. And so when you look at our overall tax rate over the next several years, these are projections, our tax rate is estimated to reduce over the next several years. So for the 2223 school year, we're estimating about a dollar, just a little over a dollar two, that falls to 98 cents, 96 cents, and 95 cents. These are all estimates, but based on what we're seeing with our property value growth, we will continue to have an overall tax rate reduction in this district. And then finally, looking at ESER II dollars, we have the opportunity to receive federal funding from the federal government with both ESER II and ESER III dollars. ESER II, $69.3 million, and ESER III, $155.6 million. And as of the end of January, this basically shows where we are with overall expenditures, $31 million we've expended to date out of ESER II, and out of ESER III, $16.6 million. Part of that includes supplanting. I actually just signed a, a large journal entry to claim much more of that through payroll and utilities, so next month, you'll see a much larger number spent out of ESER III dollars. Also, on our website, we do have more detailed information, austinisd.org/esser, and that includes a detailed summary of... And that includes a detailed summary of not only the budget, but some of the spending categories that we have as a district that were included in the ESER plan and the overall total budget as of the end of January. And so we are also currently looking at a program by Chiefs for Change, and that includes more robust reporting with our ESER dollars. And so we are in the process of loading information into those templates so that we can add that to our website and continue to improve our transparency with these dollars. Any questions on our budget?
Thank you. Trustee Wagner, then Trustee Singh, and then Trustee Anderson, sorry.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Ramos, for all of the incredible work that you and your team have put into preparing this for us. I think having gone through this process, I guess this is my sixth or seventh time to go through this process, having the tabling exercise tonight was particularly beneficial to have something that was so tactile to wrap your head around, because I think that's one of the things I've seen a struggle with in the past, is, and I think that's why I keep asking for things like puts and takes, and you know, just to start to kind of get a sense for what we're gaining and giving up. So this has been really helpful, and having the data behind this is also really helpful as well. I did want to thank the comms team for all the work that you guys have been putting to get the word out about our recapture, because it's challenging to even believe the scale of it. And so getting the word out has been particularly helpful. And Mr. Ramos, you touched on community starting to get involved. That is probably the number one question I'm getting, is people feel the outrage when they see those comms, but then they don't know where to place that outrage and what to do next. And so I'm really hopeful that we'll start to see some additional communications that can start to tell community members how they can get involved, where they can direct the ire and frustration with the system and making sure that we're able to retain money for the real needs that we have in Austin. I did want to ask about, because I know we had a couple of budget years where we thought we were going to be in a deficit, but then the property evaluations surprised us and we ended up basically getting a jail-free card a couple of times since I've been on this board. What I see in your presentation is, from what I'm kind of hearing in the rumor mill, is a conservative estimate, I think, for what property evaluations are going to be. What is kind of that tipping point, though? Because I know there's like the mix of where we get to with property valuation, increasing recapture, and where we get to from the point of how much we can actually retain in the district. And so it'd be helpful to understand what point we get to that tipping point, where we actually are not losing as much as we think we're going to.
So one of the things, we have run projections, we ran 8.5% property value growth, we ran a 10% property value growth. And the faster that we grow as a district, assuming no enrollment growth, then that's going to escalate our recapture payment and really hurt our budget in the long run. And so again, that's why we continually watch the data. We try to build some cushion in our estimates. You heard about the 92% ADA. We're hoping next year, we're above that percentage, so that would help cushion any increase in recapture payment that we don't foresee. We try to build some cushion in our property tax collections. We assume a 98.5% collection rate. We're usually at 99%. But again, wanting to make sure that we are conservative with our estimates and have a cushion in there for any unforeseen circumstances that may occur.
Thank you for that. And I also want to make sure, too, that that is definitely something that our community is aware of, that we are actively reducing our tax rate whenever we possibly can. So, because we know when people get their tax bill and they see AISD is the largest line item on that bill, it's hard to believe that the district actually is trying to be as pragmatic as it possibly can and not passing along any unnecessary costs to taxpayers. So that's something I hope that we can make sure is very well understood by our community, too. One of the things that I did want to touch on, too, just regarding compensation and positions, is that with our group discussions, the biggest no brainers for us were trying to increase compensation whenever possible. And I think with almost every opportunity we had in front of us, we said, yes, absolutely, that stays in the yes pile for sure, because protecting people and recognizing what is really a livable wage and what's required for somebody to live and continue to work in our AISD community is critically important. And it's a human, humane right thing to do as well. So that's where I don't want to just gloss over the fact that cutting 250 positions, it's a quick bullet point, but I did want to just call it out, because I know many of those folks were notified just a week and a half ago that they were one of those positions. And I do want to make sure that every single one of those people know that they were valuable and they still are valuable parts of our AISD community. And this was not a decision that was made lightly by anyone here. And so I want to thank them for their service to AISD and also just to take a moment to reflect on the fact that this, that is a painful cut, because that was the one thing in this position that I never wanted to have to do, was to cut positions. And we're faced with that right now. And it, even if it's not positions in the classroom, it's still positions that function to support the needs of our district and ultimately the students in our district. So just wanted to take a moment to call that out.
Thank you, Trustee Singh.
Thank you, Trustee Wagner. I appreciate what you were saying about the 250 staff positions. That is definitely not something we take lightly. I wanted to take a moment, if, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or if we're going to be doing this, I don't know what the rest of the meeting looks like. Is this the end of the presentation? Okay. All right. So I want to take a moment, I looked at the budget development calendar that we had approved last fall, and I wanted, I had a couple of questions. One was really to the community engagement. I know that we were not able to, we had to kind of reschedule some of those sessions that were scheduled previously. Have we, do we have dates?
We set those in a board update. It's late March, early April. We have two of those scheduled.
Okay.
31st and the 2nd, I think.
Yes.
Great. And those are going to be on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. Are there going to be any opportunities for doing something kind of hands-on, maybe? Like, I'm thinking like with the DAC or, you know, one of our committees that, you know, is just, that we typically go to, to be a little bit more engaged in some of this?
I could get, yes.
Is that something that y'all could consider doing? Okay. And then another question I had was, one of the items on here, number 13, is the annual review of district contracted partnerships and their measurement of student outcomes, which was scheduled for December. Is that something that has happened? And what was the, what did you all learn from that? Is that something that could be shared?
I have to go back to go look and see what specifically would be attached to that. I don't have a response right now.
I would have to investigate as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'd be really interested. And I think some of that might be related to the DM group report that we got a couple of years ago that we paid a lot of money for. I'm not sure if we've ever utilized that report, but I hope this could be an opportunity for us to take a look at that. And the other one was related to the elementary, secondary, and special campus school BTOs. You know, I know that that's, that happens, you know, that's a process, an intense process. And I imagine with, I don't think decisions have been finalized with regards to the elementary planning stuff. Is that correct? And when?
Those are still processes that are ongoing, because those are going to be tailored to the individual campuses and what access they have regarding size of the school and so on and so forth. The biggest issue regarding that is we do have to ensure that we're in compliance with the law of 135 minutes of PE per week for elementary students. And so each campus is working alongside school leadership. So it'll, ultimately, we will be moving and identifying those BTOs very soon, because they do have to create their schedules. And so while we haven't finalized them, because each campus may end up, it may not be exactly the same across the board, based again on the size of the school and the way in which that particular leadership team from each campus decided, we think this is best for us, this works better for us than doing it this way. So the parameters were more around just ensuring that we must abide by the law with regard to the physical education minutes. So we haven't finalized them, they're still in process, but they will be finalized soon.
Okay. And I guess once you guys have your proposal, is that when the trustees would be able to have a more kind of robust discussion around that? Or?
That would be up to the board as to whether that's an agenda item for discussion.
Just we'll take that in the governance meeting?
Okay, cool. And then I also wanted to just mention a couple of things for us to consider for next year's budget calendar. I would be interested in taking a look at some of the things we've done in the past that did have a little bit more formal community engagement and think about if our board would want to see that for next year when we do the budget calendar. So just a little note, because it's pretty interesting to see how some of those things are in there. The other thing that I wanted to mention was on the recapture, thank you so much for just making that super clear. And I just want to, I couldn't not just make a quick mention of, recapture is an issue, but the bigger issue is the basic allotment, I think, which is, like, you know, even if we reduce recapture, it's, the only way you reduce recapture is if the legislature decides to increase the basic allotment. It's not like we can reduce the recapture by $100 million and we get to keep that. Every student in AISD and in the state gets a certain dollar amount, and then they get a little bit more weighting depending on special needs or characteristics they might have. And so I would really hope that as people in the community are talking about recapture, don't leave out the part about basic allotment. And Trustee Boswell can tell you all about that, because I learned a lot, most of everything I know from her. So I think that's really critical. And then with regards to the new ideas that we came up with in the group, what would be the appropriate time for us to share some of those with the staff?
Probably during the small groups that we schedule through Dr., I mean, Chief Reach.
Okay. Okay, so those will be coming up. Cool. Thank you.
Trustee, Trustee Bagel?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for all of this. It's helpful to see this preview. And I just want to echo some of what Trustee Singh said about community engagement. And I appreciate Trustee Sapata's reminder of that city process when the city was going through some difficult budget conversations. And they did really thoughtful, really deep community engagement. And I think several of us probably remember an online interactive thing that was basically kind of like having these cards in a set that you could adjust and move, and it calculated it for you. We were all doing math on paper until we pulled out our phones at our table, I don't know about your table. But it was a really great tool that really did let people get engaged and also served as a really valuable source of information. And I think our community is hungry for that. We've seen that and the responses we've gotten about the planning time and what we might have to, you know, the proposals of how that's going to be managed and the give and take of that. We've seen it in the conversations about a lot of things. And our community is engaged and involved and has a lot to say. So I think the more they can, the more opportunities we give, the better. And I have been sharing the newly, the rescheduled budget conversations. So thank you very much for doing that. And then also would like to share, I do think there were some thoughtful things in the older calendar that we had left out, that I would love to consider for next year. Thank you for that. And then since Trustee Singh mentioned it, when people are talking about recapture, two things they can remember to make it easy. We are in the bottom quarter of per-student funding nationwide, and we fund, we are more than $3,000 less than the average, national average in per-student funding. If you can remember those two things when you're talking to people about recapture, they have a really complete picture of exactly where we are and what would need to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bagel. Any other comments, trustees? Trustee Anderson?
So I'm a follow-up, kind of touching on recapture, but more so talking about students. So it's good to talk to the legislature, but if a family can't afford to live in Austin, so there needs to also be a conversation with the city on marketing, on hot markets to families. Because I've seen something in my, I don't want to say in my travels, but in my time with volunteering with the city, and I didn't see anything that says family-friendly. So we can go talk to the legislature, but as we're continuing to lose students, then we're going to be in the same place. So I would hope in this whole recapture conversation, there's also a conversation with the city, and you can bring that up to the legislature. Like, we are, we're losing students because of affordability, which is happening in many places, but I can't control that. I mean, but when do we have that conversation? That's the conversation I'm looking for, the discussion with the city to see how we can begin to get families, not singles and pets, but families into Austin. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Anderson. Trustees, any other comments? Well, I appreciate all of the hard work and the intentionality, intentionality and thoughtfulness of both the administration's presentations and then the trustees and their questions and how we are all taking the budget preparation seriously and thoughtfully, and look forward to more discussions. And then I'll just ask one more time, trustees, if there are any final questions, thoughts?
Question?
Trustee Singh?
Are they, are y'all going to collect? Like, did you, we should have taken a picture or something.
Well, what I might ask about, I mean, thank you for that reminder, because I think in the spirit of what we've done before with Dr. Reach, we usually take these kinds of, like, even when we do requests, we now have a list that we can share with the entire board, because I think probably our ideas, and then we've got to combine them with the other group's ideas, so that we can both see the same thing.
Better groups.
The other group's ideas. But seeing if any of those have any, if there's more discernment to be done with all of them, so that we're all seeing the same thing. And that includes the cards and the comments and stuff. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Trustee Lugo or Trustee Sapata, do you have any final comments you'd like to make? So Trustee Sapata says no. Trustee Lugo?
No, none at this time.
Okay. Thank you and appreciate the reminder that we have two of our trustees are on Zoom. So if there are no final questions, Secretary Singh, do I have a motion? And thank you again, Ed and the team and Dr. Lisabey. Secretary Singh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion to adjourn the meeting by Secretary Singh in a second by Trustee Anderson, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those at the dais. The meeting is now adjourned at 8:45 PM. Thank you all very much.